Yeah, okay. It is six o'clock. Welcome to the May 10th Joint Concord Carlisle Concord School Committee meeting. I'd like, oh, no.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I see.
Or do I call?
The region can open it since we're not.
Even without the Concord people, like you haven't officially.
Just go ahead and call it to order. I think you're fine.
Okay. The region is called to order and we'll do a roll call once the Concord School Committee seats. Okay. Oh, yeah, we're all in person. Okay. Okay. So then Dr. Hunter?
So we're going to need to seat the Concord School Committee. So we're looking for nominations for Chair.
I'm going to nominate Alexa Anderson as Chair of the Concord School Committee.
Can you get your mic?
Oh, sorry.
I will nominate Alexa Anderson as Chair of the Concord School Committee.
Second.
Any other nominations or discussion?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was everybody, I think, your masks on. Great. All yours, Alexa.
Alexa, for your ear, is it better here or there?
And I think it'll be okay. I just have to hear. Actually, this is.
No, it's better.
No, it's not.
We're both deaf on the same side.
Yeah, we're silent. Yep. Correct.
Alexa, you'll seek nominations for Vice?
Yes. Might we have a nomination for a Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Carrie Rankin for Vice Chair of the Concord School Committee.
Second.
Discussion or any other nominations?
On discussion, I'd like to thank Alexa for stepping up and Carrie for being a willing service officer. And Cynthia for completing tough COVID years Chair. Thank you.
Everyone online, please mute.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Lori, is it appropriate for me, help me out here, to simply say I move to appoint Erin Higgins as the School Committee Recording Secretary for the Concord Public Schools School Committee.
Yes, if the Chair is good.
Yes, of course.
Consider that a motion, please.
Second.
Or a second, yep. And discussion, oh, there's no discussion for that. So all in favor?
Aye.
I move that the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle School Committee will enter into executive session under Purpose Three of the Open Meeting Law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
Oh.
Point of order?
Our online one says that. Oh, never mind, never mind, never mind. No, no point of order. Continue, I'm sorry.
Okay. Discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the CCHS Students Union and Purpose Seven, to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, specifically to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22A and F, with regard to the review and approval of executive session minutes from March 8, March 22, April 5, April 13, April 26, 2022, in each case, and under Purpose One, under which the April 5, 2022 executive session was held; Purpose Two, under which the March 8, 2022 executive session was held; and Purpose Three, under which the March 8, March 22, April 5, April 13, and April 26, all of 2022, executive sessions were held and returned to open session at 6:45.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call. Roll call to go do that.
It's a roll call. Anderson, aye for both.
Ruth, aye for both.
Morado, aye for both. What's up, the aye for region?
Rainey, aye for both.
Frank, aye for both.
Wilson for region.
Okay. Move it down.
Hi, I'd like to call back to order the May 10th Joint Concord, Concord Carlisle School Committee, School Committee meeting. And I'd like to begin with our CCHS student update. And we have, there we go, we have Zariah, we have Harry and Darcy.
Hello. Sorry, we had to quickly change locations. They're vacuuming where we were originally set up, so.
Hello.
Okay. So here is our.
Darcy, can I just stop? Do you know if Zariah is on?
Yeah, she is on.
She's here, yes.
Is her video on? Because I can't see her yet.
Um, I'm not sure. She's definitely here. I've been emailing with her.
Okay.
Yeah.
Welcome our new student rep.
Yeah.
So we actually have a whole slide.
Yeah, we were going to say.
There we go.
If she's here, we want to welcome our new School Committee student member. And she's a freshman and we're super excited to have her here. So if she's here and she wants to say anything, we'd be happy to hear from her.
Hi, I'm Zariah. I'm a freshman and I've been going to Concord schools for four years now as I am a MECO student. And a few things I've done are like, I guess I, I was in the fall production for Midsummer Night's Dream and I'm also a part of the BSU or Black Student Union. And that's really, oh.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're really happy to have you. And then as far as our regular updates, we have a few like quick points. First of all, I've definitely noticed like a little bit of a heightened anxiety surrounding COVID, which I'm sure you've probably heard about too, but there have obviously been slightly increased caseloads at school. And I had a conversation with Ms. Koski, the school's head and ones, about sort of like increasing participation in pool testing and also at home testing. I know we've been having a problem as a school. There's sort of been a mentality where like, if you don't get tested, you can't get it. But I've heard from a lot of people, so. Combat that is very important. And also just with the at-home test, I know it's a big investment for the district, so make sure that people are actually picking them up. And then also just for like Darcy and I, the sophomores math MCAS coming up. And then for the older students, APs are ongoing. So those are two kind of big events, I would say, in the like greater scheme of things. And then on Sunday, Class Garment is hosting a spring cleanup. And this one's kind of interesting because High Street Lawn, which is a landscaping company founded by former CC graduates, is getting a bunch of like flowers and other plants that they're going to be planting around the school and in the front entryway. So it's great. A lot of kids from school volunteer and stuff like that. So, yeah. And Darcy, do you want to take the next couple?
Yeah. So also over the past two weekends, there's been over 50 members of the National Honor Society who have volunteered to clean up the yards of local senior citizens. So that's a great initiative and where it's been fantastic. And that's been a collaboration between the National Honor Society and the Concord Council on Aging. Interviews also have begun this week for student advisor leader positions, which are for rising juniors and seniors. So every Wednesday, we have a thing called Advisory. And it's basically a place where students can kind of get leader, advice and leadership.
Basically.
Basically. Yeah, so that's exciting. And then also the annual CCHS art exhibit will open and present awards at the ceremony next Thursday.
And that's in collaboration with Concord Art, which is obviously a much bigger like community art program. So that's very exciting, too.
And then finally, 42nd Street opened last weekend and there are many, many students and community members who attended and it received very positive feedback. And it was a great show.
Yeah, we actually have some pictures of all those things. You can see, this is a picture I took at 42nd Street down below. So many of my friends I know went. I had a really great time. I thought it was fantastic, really just to be back in the auditorium. And then upstairs, you could see, I thought this is interesting. I actually just took this picture on my way to school. But a bunch of art classes have been working outside and they've been creating like a little garden. I don't know if you could see it in the background. They have a hammock and like some water fountains and all sorts of stuff like that. So it's very exciting. And then this is just a picture that Mrs. Poehler, who runs the National Honor Society, sent me. And it's a picture of some of the student volunteers cleaning up landscapes. And I think that's something they do every year in the fall and spring. So.
Yeah.
It's an exciting event. And yeah, we're super happy to have Zariah and.
And if she wants to give any updates at all as well.
Yeah, no pressure.
Yeah.
Great.
Great.
Thank you so much. This is so much, so much fun stuff happening, outdoor stuff, indoor stuff, starting to feel like spring. Yeah.
And seniors are graduating. I think it's only two weeks, so that feels so.
The last day of classes is 24th, which is crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Zariah. Bye. Bye, Harry. Bye, Darcy. Okay. So now we are public comment. We have three minutes per speaker. We will take people in person first and move to people on Zoom.
Members of the Chair, members of the School Committee, Dr. Hunter, Assistant Superintendent Stanton. Good to see all of you. My name is Jim Bozak. I'm the President of the Concord Public School Building Service Workers Union. It's great to see everybody in person. I have a number of colleagues with me. They all wanted to be here for Jared Stanton's last public meeting. The Kyle Sweeney, they're all supervisors of each building. Kyle Sweeney at Willard, Mike Dodge at Alcott, Domenio Formato at Thoreau, Ted Noke at Sanborn, and John DeRose at Ripley. We are here publicly to thank Jared Stanton for all he has done for the past four years. Jared has the ability, skill to bring people together. He has brought honesty and integrity back to the business office. He is a respected administrator and he respects others. He's accessible at any time, day or night. We have never felt so supported. Jared, we're so disappointed that you're leaving. It's a great loss to the school district. In my 37 years working at Concord, you have been the best finance director I have ever worked with, the best.
You've done an amazing job.
You have lots to be proud of. I know our friendship will last a lifetime. I hope you know how much you mean to all of us. My colleagues join me in wishing you good luck and wishing you the very best. St. John Prep is so lucky to have you. Thank you.
This is really fair. I hear what I have to say. Joanna Boynton, 72 Treston Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to thank all of you at the table for the work you do. It's countless hours. I've been there and often it's thankless. But for a little context, for those of you who don't know me, I served on the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committee for six years, from 2013 to 2019. I have four children, all of whom attended public schools. When I ran for School Committee, there were many contentious issues. And suffice it to say, there was a profound lack of trust within the schools and the community amongst all the stakeholders. When I started my first term, the School Committee meetings looked more like this, chock full of people, parents, teachers, stakeholders, community members. And we managed many emotional and angry points of view on several topics. In 2013, sorry, 16 and 2017, I led the year-long search for a new superintendent. It was designed to maximize the opportunity for public participation and ensure it was inclusive and transparent. Lori Hunter was the overwhelming favorite and received unanimous vote by both school committees. I might add, we agreed on very little back then. But since July 2017, Lori has worked tirelessly to change the school culture and to move to a more collaborative and positive one. And by the way, I know this is, she's hating this because she would never want this, but I have not spoken to Lori, but I'm doing this, just you'll all understand. But anyway, to a more collaborative and positive one and to restore trust that was so badly broken. I was a firsthand witness to and partner in her work for the first two years of her tenure. Lori has shown herself to be tireless in her work, collaborative in her deliberations, ethical, honest, transparent, bravely committed, noble and a powerful example of a strong leader. She is dedicated to our school community, from her senior admin team to the teachers, to the custodians, to the bus drivers, union leadership, parents, students. Look at the assembled crowd tonight. This was not the case when Lori Hunter began her superintendent tenure. That is why I was absolutely shocked to learn yesterday morning that she has filed a hostile work environment complaint against the school committee. I'm shocked to read that she writes of bullying and intimidation, attacks of interfering with her ability to focus on the intense responsibilities of her job. She notes that other members of her administrative team have similarly felt the impact of the hostility. I since learned of Jared's resignation because of the difficult climate. I was also here when Lori hired Jared. He is the consummate professional, as you heard, and again, provided devoted, tireless, honest, transparent and ethical work. He is one of the most highly regarded in his field. And I also want to add, the past two years that Lori Hunter has led this school district with her team through COVID with a positive and collaborative spirit and was committed to bringing students back safely. COVID has taken its toll. COVID has taken its toll on all administrators like never before. And our superintendent and her team held us together. Was it perfect? No, but she got everyone back to school safely. The leadership of both teachers' unions have described Lori in their most real letter as, quote, "a leader of unquestionable integrity" and that, quote, "the cascade of impacts her departure would ever trigger will take years to overcome." So I'm here tonight speaking to you, the School Committee, because there seems to be a disconnect here between you or some of you and the entire Concord, Carlisle and Boston school community and its stakeholders. What I do know is that losing Lori Hunter would wield a devastating blow to our schools, our morale, our community, our town. The various stakeholders here tonight demonstrate that. The committee members who see this differently, the patterns of the conduct that has now been exposed, please hear these voices tonight. Please resurrect this situation. Concord should not be in a position to run their superintendent out of her job. Thank you.
Good evening. Casey Atkins, 477 Losbrook Road. And I'm, I'm sorry, Joanna, I'm going to have to adjust.
I'd just like to remind speakers that we have the three-minute, three-minute time for speakers. I just want to remind people about. Pardon?
Really have to speak out?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Just want to remind people about the three-minute time limit for speakers.
Three-minute time. Is this on? Okay, great. Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. Okay, thank you so much. I am here tonight on behalf of the Concord and Concord Carlisle Regional Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And thank you for your time. We respectfully submit this statement in support of Dr. Lori Hunter. We were dismayed to learn of the formal complaint filed by Lori against the joint school committees. Lori has been a reliable and steady administrative leader in our districts in what we can all agree are particularly trying times. Lori's leadership in special education has made and continues to make a true difference for our student population. While we may not always see eye to eye on every issue, we have found her commitment to students with disabilities to be unwavering. As the formal complaint describes events and communications to which we were not privy, we acknowledge that we lack the appropriate context to otherwise comment. We would be remiss, however, if we did not also recognize the individual and joint school committees in the critically important work that you do in our districts. Our school committee members are unpaid elected volunteers who spend countless hours working on behalf of the community. Even in non-pandemic times, they are tasked with navigating and solving some of the most significant challenges our districts face. Collectively, our school committee members have tirelessly committed decades and decades of public service to our town. We fervently hope that Dr. Hunter and the school committees can find a way to amicably resolve this complaint. When the pandemic hit, the administration and our school committees worked as a cohesive team, making hard decisions with little guidance and communicating regularly and effectively with the community. We were the envy of many districts. We know the administration and school committees can come together and collaborate effectively on behalf of our children and the community, and we hope that they can do so once again. In these deeply polarized times, we encourage everyone to stay engaged, all of us here. Stay engaged with one another while doubling down on civility, decency and respect, which are the hallmarks of this community. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
My name. My name is Kate Belushi. I'm at 593 Strawberry Hill Road. I have a third grader in, pardon me, this is going to be a little emotional. I want to thank all of you for your work here and for having this public forum. And I especially want to thank Dr. Hunter. I will share with you that I currently run state contact tracing programs for multiple states and worked for 13 years in special education consulting. When the, when the COVID-19 hit, I worked with Departments of Education and school districts all over the country and I saw them scramble. I was part of the conversations to bring those superintendents together who had no guidance. You know, we were trying to work with our partners, you know, along with the fed, with the federal government to try and figure out, how do we come up with a plan? And, and I just want to share that I walked into many of those meetings as we brought folks together and said, well, and they turned to us and said, do you have other ideas? I would literally say, well, I can share with you what's happening in my school district. I brought forth the outcomes of Concord Public School and Carlisle School District's conversations and plans. And I can only stress how important they were to national standards that went into place in large urban school districts and states all across the country. I shared how our children were attending school. I shared how our children, I have a first grader at the time who was suddenly at home with me, who while I worked in education, have zero background in teaching. I felt supported. I felt that my child had the tools they needed. And in cases where I knew of students that didn't, you know, they could reach out and were either connected with teachers or resources for help. When I shared these plans at national tables, there was amazement that Concord Public Schools had been able to do that. The lack of fighting, the lack of lawsuits from the teachers' unions stood out to me and to my colleagues nationally. So I just want to speak as a parent of a student who went through this with you. I want to thank you for the work. I want to thank the work of any of you and all of you that participated in those plans. And I just want to say that while some of you may not have the perspective of what this looked like in school districts all over the country, Concord Public Schools was amazing in terms of what they were able to provide as support for their children. Thank you.
This will be our last public comment for the first public comment session. And then we'll, because we have the robotics students waiting and some presentations. Okay, thank you.
My name is Wilson Kerr, 20 Damon Street. I have two small children. One is in Thoreau. I would like to be very blunt. To those on this school committee who have engaged in the small little things that we all know if we've been in work environments that cause tension, they cause hostility, they cause caustic environments to be created, know that we know what that feels like. Okay? Know that you are not representing by those actions the vast majority of the people of Concord, the people who cherish the educational system we get. Know that we also feel the environment that Lori has created. We are the envy of local schools. We all have friends in different school systems. It was easy just to shut it down and go home. She didn't. We also are judges of character. It is instantly apparent that when you're with Lori, when you spend time with her, when you see these teachers that are here, when you read the letters, that she is a person of high integrity. She is also a humble person who does not seek this attention. She must have been in a terrible place to have to write that complaint, which has now become public. And she must have spent the three months between the time that she filed it, working diligently to try and resolve this issue. Only now has this had to happen. And it has happened because of the conduct, small actions, tone, little things, some of which Lori outlined by some people on this school committee. You do not represent what we all know Lori to be. Amend your behavior, work this out. We cannot lose Lori Hunter.
Thank you. And as noted on our agenda, we always do the 15 minutes of public comment at the beginning and a return to public comment at the end of the meeting after our action items. And so now I would like to welcome the CCHS robotics team. Hi, thank you for coming. Do you want to introduce?
Lori, do you have slides?
Okay, perfect. However you want to, yep, okay. However you want to run it.
That's your microphone. Right. Thank you.
Yes, I got it. Okay, thank you.
So, so welcome. Thank you for joining us. Would anyone like to begin to introduce, introduce your, your team? Thank you.
And so what's here today is to tell you guys a little bit about, about what we do as a team and how we ultimately are the ultimate STEM program in the high school. about what we do as a team and how we ultimately are the ultimate STEM program in the high school. If our students are looking to getting into STEM, this is the ultimate program for them to be a part of. Students who are on the CCHS First Robotics Team are leading first-world important skills like leadership, engineering, design, coding, interpersonal relations, everything that's really crucial to becoming a prominent person in this modern day. And so, as we see here, we just have a photo, but we'll get to it. My name, by the way, Duncan Guchar. I am a senior at Concord Carlisle High School.
Duncan, stay close to the microphone.
Yeah, sorry. I'm a senior, and I'm the driver of the robot, and I'm also one of the team captains. So our team is made of 36 members. We have 11 seniors, nine juniors, 10 sophomores, and six freshmen. So what's kind of special about a robot is on the back here, it's kind of hard to see, but we have a special engraved panel with all the team members' names into it, and also mentors. And that's actually using the school's new laser cutter, which is given as a grant as well. Yes.
You'll have to remember me, I'm driving this light.
Yeah, no worries. So our team mentors consist of Elaine McCard, who's our teacher and coach. We have Walter Hickman. And we're super appreciative of our mentors, and we're always looking to get new mentors as well. That's really, really crucial to have a successful season and to really get all the students on the team energized and learning new things.
Hi. My name is Alicia. I'm another captain of the team. I work mostly on the mechanical stuff, building the robot. The organization that we compete through is called FIRST, and it's actually an acronym and it stands for Inspiration in Redefinition of Science and Technology. And that really represents what it's all about. Each year, every January, there's a different game design, and it's script rules, script timeline. We're only given about eight weeks to build a robot from scratch, and we have limited resources. But this is our 12th year participating, and we just keep getting better and better. Yeah.
There are about like three different sections to each of the games that are, like, every year, there's the same three sections. So the first one is autonomous, the second one is player-driven. So this year, both of these sections had to do with the cargo. So that essentially is figuring out a way to pick those up and shoot them into a upper and lower hub. And then the last part of the game is endgame. So usually there's like a balancing challenge. This year it had to do with climbing. So we, like, would actually, like, scale different rungs with our robot. And there is a brief video that goes over the more specific things that we had during the season.
Can you play the video?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
The sound?
Yes.
Competition. And this year's game is presented by the Boeing Company. Mark? How do you want me to do this?
Uh, just, yeah, it should work.
Should it?
Oh. You should have shared with audio, video, the, the, the. You can unshare, and look at the bottom of the screen to share, and it says provide audio and video.
This is not what I signed up for. Want to come help, Mark? Very high pressure.
Yeah. So I think I'm going to stop sharing for a moment.
Is it going to get center stage at some point? So we don't see it?
Yes, that's possible. Great idea. Yeah, we are probably going to have a demonstration program as well.
Welcome to the 2022 FIRST Robotics Competition. And this year's game, Rapid React, presented by the Boeing Company. Two alliances of three teams each compete to score their cargo balls into the lower hub and the upper hub. They earn additional points if the robots traverse the rungs of their hangar. Robots start each match on one of their tarmacs and may be preloaded with one cargo each. During the first 15 seconds, robots are autonomous without guidance from drivers. They leave their tarmac, score preloaded cargo, and collect and score additional cargo. During the remaining 2 minutes and 15 seconds, drivers control their robots. They continue to gather up two cargo at a time and score cargo in the lower and upper hubs. Cargo scored into either hub count towards the cargo bonus. Launchpads protect robots from contact by opponent robots. Robots may use either terminal where their human players assist the robots with acquiring cargo. As time runs out, robots race to their hangar and traverse as many rungs as possible. The higher a robot gets, the more points it earns. An alliance that reaches a hangar point threshold is rewarded with a ranking point. The alliance that earns the most points wins the match. Welcome to the 2022 FIRST Robotics.
So, um, on the next slide, there's another quick clip that just zooms in on the autonomous period. So essentially, I don't know, like, I guess the best touch point is kind of like self-driving cars, since that's something that we've been talking about a lot recently, which in like this game is obviously a lot more simple, but it basically plays out so that the robot has to figure out where it is and do a bunch of tasks on its own without any assistance from us. So that is just purely software at that point. And in the next clip, there is the video of our team actually in one of the games doing that.
Competition. And this year's game, Rapid React, presented by.
There you go. Play it twice or something.
Match number 70, starting in three, two, one, go.
Away go the robots. We got our first shots from the blue alliance, 2168, making it into the high hub, missing their third shot. Patriots got their connection problems resolved. They scored one in the low hub. There's four for blue. Oh, this could be close.
So, um, yeah, as you can see, there are a lot of different challenges we encounter here. Um, but basically, like, a very brief overview is why autonomous is also just great in the game is that we have double points, so everything we do is doubled. So four points for the upper hub and two points for the lower hub. And then the second task we focused on doing was leaving this kind of like central area, which got us a few extra points. So that's kind of a very short overview of general logistics of the autonomous.
Yeah, so apparently we don't have.
Apparently we don't on that one.
So, um, can someone help you up to lift the robot? We can bring it up front center, we can show you just first-person scene and pick it up a ball and shoot it as well. I don't want to bring it over to the back. I know the robot weighs 145 pounds. But generally, how the intake works is it has these vector wheels on the side, which have rollers at 45-degree angles. Sorry, I don't like that very. The rollers have 45-degree angles, which helps basically bring the ball that's on the side towards the center. And then, brings the ball towards the center, and then it's brought up into the robot by these squishy wheels here. And then once it's inside the robot, it's brought in by these storage motors. We can fit two balls, one inside the intake in the first storage motor and one, like, basically inside the shooter. And then on the inside of the shooter, we have a ramp that we laser cut also using the high school laser cutter. And then these two wheels up here, they get spun really fast and shoot it up the top. Are we able to show them? Oh, shoot left. So, in, so. When you question, in theory, it would drive into the ball, and then go pick it up, but simulate that. Yeah, I could just pull my head here. So.
As long as it doesn't hit Mark.
Um, sorry, these aren't going to react.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
All right, so, um, as I've already said before, the last 30 seconds of the game are the endgame portion, where the robot goes to the hangar area and either hang or climb. Our robot has these two hooks here, and we can hang onto either the first or the second bar in the hangar. Um, as I mentioned before, it is 125 pounds, and it's only being lifted by these two hooks, which are at about the center of gravity on the robot. For the hooks, we made each of the different parts on here based off of an online kit, but instead of buying the kit, decided to make every part on our own to save money and resources. So there are 14 plates on the two hooks combined that we designed and cut using our mill. We made all the spacers that are on here, which are on along the hook here and in the base down there, and we 3D-printed the sliders that are inside the hooks, so that helps them move up and down. Um, each hook is controlled with a winch, so there's a rope running through here, a spool at the bottom, and they each have a motor and a motor control.
And we can, so, basically, how this works in a match is, as you saw in the demo video, there's, there are rungs that the robot needs to hang on. So what we do at the end of the match is we drag the robot into the rungs. Imagine a rung goes into the team that immediately goes to track, and because of the gearing, there's enough to pull us up and score those points.
Yeah, so I can talk a little bit about defense. So our team, we found a lot of success in defense. That was kind of our main play style. That's what we actually got known for by other teams. We would hear other teams would come up to us at competitions, and they had watched our previous matches, you know, about our defense. So basically, in any match, you're on an alliance of three teams each, so it's three-on-three, and it's randomized. So it'll be with random other schools, random other teams that you're talking with and strategizing with. So our strategy playing defense is basically to deny the opponent as many points as possible. So we do that by basically picking up two opponent balls and holding on to it for the rest of the match, and then play keep away, and then we disrupt the opponent robots, push them around, make them, make it a lot more hard for them to shoot. And so this is a clip here of our defense being played out, and the caster also mentioned it too. And so if you can see on the clip here, we're in the bottom left with this red robot right here. It's basically, we're preventing that robot from picking up any cargo around. And, uh, yeah, so that's, our defense was ultimately what we were picked for by the top alliances and then how we ended up being successful at the competitions as well.
So we ended up doing pretty well at our two district events. We placed second place and first place. Therefore, it wasn't us to do that. Therefore, we got a blue banner that's now hung up in the school or will be when we return from this. And then that led us to qualify for the district championship for New England. And then because of how we did there and our previous district events, we got invited to the world championship.
Next slide, please. Our 2022 season would not have been possible without our generous sponsors like Analog Devices, Cambridge Savings Bank, and the Flori Giving Fund, but most importantly, the school district, Concord and Carlisle. They managed to get us two events by providing transportation, all of our registration fees, and the parts that made us able to build this amazing robot right here. We also did some fundraising on our own. We sold some scarves all around town at the tree lighting, outside of Crosby's on the weekends, and even at football games. But since this is our best year yet, we have just been getting better and better. And as we get better, we are in need of more money.
The game is the right play.
We also have gone so much more members this year, and with more members, that also means we need more mentors. So we are looking for sponsors and team mentors, and, yeah, thank you so much. Any questions?
I wonder if we could start with a real practical one. How do people contact you if they want to sponsor? Because you've got a big PSA tonight, and you have a lot of supporters here.
They can email me at the high school, epicard@concordcarlisle.org. And, uh, yeah, if you want to be a mentor, a sponsor, if someone in your family works for a big tech company, they're usually good sponsors, but we have Cambridge Savings Bank, so really, any, you know, any, any company that's willing to sponsor us, we welcome the funding.
So that's epicard@concordcarlisle.org.
Any help is greatly appreciated.
Can I ask another one?
Go ahead.
Could you speak a little bit about how you organized everybody? Did you have real functional groups, you know, a programming group and a testing group? And how did it all work?
Yeah. Yeah, so when, at the start, when I talked about how this is the ultimate STEM program, I truly do mean that. We break up right at the start of the season into design groups. So as soon as the game comes out, we're breaking up into smaller groups to kind of decide our strategy on the game. And from there on out, we're all working in separate groups on the different parts of the robot, like the intake, the shooter, the drive base, but we all come together and kind of combine everything all as one unit. So we're never really disconnected. We're all working together at the same time. But we do have the, like, separate groups. We have group leaders for each group as well to make sure everything gets done on time. And so really, it is kind of like modeling business. We are basically trying to make the team as good as we can, reach a certain goal, and so it runs just like a business. We have leaders for the groups. We have the mentors, financial leaders, all that kind of stuff. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that's what happens during the design period. And then another key component that we have is that obviously everything needs to work together to be a cohesive system. So we will have, as Alicia mentioned, she does a lot of mechanical work and helped make this possible, and everybody did. And then we also have electrical and software, so that's all working in unison to allow us to compete at the competition, so.
I have a, so I assume you do a lot of testing, right? You're, yeah, I mean, my former life, I was tested software. So I'm sure it's just like, you have a concept, you build it, and then you just work out. I'm sure you had very few bugs, but a few, right?
Yeah, throughout the, at the beginning of the season, we do this thing called CAD, computer-aided design. So we basically have a 3D model online of our entire robot, and that allows us to map everything out beforehand before we start building.
I can, I can elaborate a bit more about the testing. So obviously, testing is a key component of this. It's such a big system with so many different components. So to do the testing, we need to be able to, we need to be able to simulate what the game environment would be. So that involves getting a bunch of people to build markups of the field elements. If you saw the videos of the games, you can see the, the field is very big and the elements are quite big. So you had to get creative with ways to set up, set up things that would simulate, elements that would simulate the field. In terms of where we, and in terms of where we set up the testing is, we did in the high school, basically, we cleared. uh, basically, uh, we cleared out breakout space and basically set up there every day to, to do the testing. Uh, unfortunately, the era that we got was not, is not big enough to actually simulate the whole field, so there were some limitations with what we could do.
We're creative, though, we did like different portions of the field, so.
Thank you guys so much.
Have your classmates seen this? Is it out on display at the high school?
I think a few of them have stopped by and seen it.
Do we have the, the presentation linked to the agenda so that maybe people can see the videos? And, and, and enable sharing for the other videos so that everyone else can see uh your work more easily and bring some more eyeballs to you?
I just wanted to mention one thing about how we actually end up connecting with other high schools all over New England. So um especially at WPI Central Mass and the district championship, all three of your events, we met schools from Vermont, New Hampshire, Connecticut, all across New England that we're now good friends with, and we're actually like talking with on Instagram, reaching out to for help. Um, and so it really, this is such a great opportunity to even like connect with other schools, STEM programs, and build off of each other through that, because there's some other schools that are way just incredible, the robotics team, so we can gain a lot of knowledge from that. Um, so it's really like a whole group effort between tons of schools in New England. Yeah, yeah.
It's very nice.
You make us all proud.
Yeah, that's very.
Thank, thank you. Um, congratulations to the, the seniors who are leaving, and it's very exciting to see such a nice distribution of grades represented in your team, so I expect you guys will be coming back uh for more recognitions in the future. Yeah.
Walter's very competitive, I know that.
I know, it was an exciting couple of minutes. I'm excited to watch the videos again. Oh, it's neat, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Did you sign? They like to jump off.
Okay, um, so now we'll go back to the reading of the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from open session of April thirteenth, twenty-two?
Don't move.
There's a second, discussion? Then.
Thank you to our scribe.
Yes.
Thank you, Erin, as always. Um, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, so correspondence, um, we had one correspondence about, inquiring about masks. Um, we had about over, well, I don't know, in the region, we had over a hundred and fifty correspondence um referencing um the complaint, and in the Concord, do you know how many you had? Yeah, as of five PM, we had just under a hundred um separate emails referencing the complaint, which um, you know, I do think it's important that we take note, that's a significant volume for us. Generally, we are not a committee that receives much correspondence, especially with respect to our peer districts. And I do think, I want to make sure everyone knows that we all receive each and every piece of correspondence, and we all read each and every piece of correspondence. Um, and those of you that have requested a reply, if you have not gotten one yet, we will certainly reply imminently.
Yep, and just to note also, Dr. Hunter receives every correspondence.
I do.
Yep, and um, I just want to note that while the committee is not able to comment on the merits of the assertions in Dr. Hunter's communication at this time, we feel the need to address the concerns raised by the community. Without agreeing that the assertions accurately reflect the flat facts, the committee as a whole takes this matter and the superintendent's feelings very seriously. The committee values the superintendent and her contributions to both districts, our students and our staff. The committee has engaged in a facilitated process utilizing a professional in the area of public education and governance to act as a neutral to assist the committee and the superintendent in a collaborative manner to resolve the areas of concern and to improve upon protocols and communication. The committee continues to be committed to such a process and is now working with its legal counsel to resolve Dr. Hunter's concerns. At this time, we are requesting that the community and staff give both the committee and the superintendent the space and time to do so. Thank you. And then we have uh chairs and the liaison's report. Okay, um, let's see, do you want to start with the CPAC?
Sure. Um, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council had their appreciation awards last week. It um was an exceptional event, it was an in-person event, and there were actually a record number of honorees and a record number of submissions, which we think um is exciting and indicative of the gains that we are making in the area of special education. Um, I also thought it was great. Last year, um, we started, or the CPAC started, a tradition of having students speak in honor of someone that was particularly impactful to them during um their years uh in special education. We had two speakers this year, um, and I just think it takes such incredible courage to come out and talk and be vulnerable um while honoring um the teachers and educators that have just clearly perfected their lives. So we thank the CPAC for this day. It is an incredible way to finish the year. I think it's a spectacular tradition, and I was really glad to be a part of it.
Thank you. Eva, you have the.
Yes, um, advisory board voted to bring uh the Center for Parents and Teachers Programs under the umbrella of Concord Carlisle Adult and Community Education. Uh, they are currently working on the new programs offerings for the parents and teachers. Uh, and they also discussed ways uh to keep parents' education programs either free or um for a small fee for parents, while maintaining the current structure for teachers' programs. Now, for people that don't know what CPT, Center for Parents and Teachers, Teachers does, um, their mission is to support families and teachers in raising and educating um the kids in our district. Um, they bring in innovative uh teaching strategies and helpful tools uh through professional development and workshops, conferences, resources coming out with latest research. So um, uh, this, so they can provide deep and enriching educational experience that exceeds the standards and benchmarks. Um, so uh, they are coming out, there is a, there is a program coming out supporting uh families, so please keep that in mind and check them out. Um, it's, it's such a wonderful organization.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a quick update from the select board meeting last night. First of all, I want to welcome Matt Johnson, who is the new chair of the select board, is our observer or liaison. Um, the big news for me is they voted to enter into negotiations with Carrie LaFleur as our town manager, moving her, not, erasing the interim. So that was great news. And I think, and I have some small things about the building project that they discussed last night. We'll do that in the conference portion.
Okay.
And I have an update for DEI. Um, we finished our, sorry, I can't take my mask off, or else I would. Um, we finished our three-part series with Dr. Martin and Ed Byrne, which was great. Um, our sessions were similar to the PD that the teachers do, and they do their twenty-five hours of training. We did nine hours of training, so we were grateful to Dr. Martin and the district for making that happen. So thank you to all of you. Um, our next subcommittee meeting will be tomorrow morning at ten-thirty via Zoom. Andrew will be previewing his strategic plan with us, a draft of that, and we're going to do a little bit of work on that, and then he'll be coming to the committee in our next meeting. Uh, we are also looking forward tonight to our first read of the policy, and I just wanted to mention that that kind of came out of the DEI committee. Andrew challenged us back in January to really, you know, really think about getting a Metco seat and representative at the school committee, so um that work's been ongoing, so I'm grateful that we're finally bringing it here. So thank you to Andrew for that. And um, the other thing that I've been a part of is the CCTA Hiring Committee. And that we've had, I think it was our third meeting, and Kristin and Lori and Andrew and I are all on that. And we, the committee's really um very enthusiastic, which is great. It's a great committee to be a part of, and they're looking to partner with local universities to um recruit and uh more teachers of color for the high school, which has been fantastic. So there's a lot of energy, and there've been a lot of nice connections that are made with different colleges, so look forward to more of that to come.
That's great. Thank you. Cork, do you have anything?
Well, I'll join us in a second. A few of us have items uh that'll come up at the uh building committee section of the meeting later. But right now, the town has a public access advisory committee. It advises on uh cable television and outreach. And the group has proposed that an award be added to their, their array of awards uh directed at middle school and high school, and would hope that that could be included, Dr. Hunter, in the uh, one of the awards programs, where there are a number of awards that are announced for student recognition. So he'll be coming to the administration. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, so on to discussion. Dr. Hunter, COVID update.
Yeah, I think actually I'll just follow up with what Darcy and Harry referenced and um share some of the data from the last week, as is happening everywhere. We're seeing the same upticks, we had a hundred and fourteen cases last week across all of the schools. Fairly evenly spread, a couple of little clusters, and we're following our new protocol of where there's a cluster to put masks back on when it's in a contained elementary setting, and hand out antigen tests so that people can test before they return to school the next day. And we're finding success with that um overall. We are at forty-nine cases already this week, so it looks like that same pattern's going to hold, um, and we'll have that same response of watching for any clusters to address and continue to encourage people to consider masking. It's worth, worth knowing that the data is what it is and make choices based on that. So certainly in touch with all of my other superintendent's friends, and we're having all the same discussions. Um, without a DESI, DPH, or local mask mandate, we will not be returning to that. So it really is an individual choice, and we are welcoming everyone to make choices that allow them to feel safe.
Thank you. And Alexa, I think that you wanted to introduce our next item.
Um, so before I turn um the next presentation over, we'll be getting a presentation um on the multi-tiered system of support for literacy. And I just wanted to say how very forward I am looking forward to this presentation. And I just wanted to point out that I think these kinds of presentations are really important for our school committee as they provide insight into how we approach instruction and intervention. Um, I also wanted to note that presentations like these also showcase the importance of our relationship with the CPAC. Um, CPAC is actually a subcommittee of the school committee, which I didn't even really know until the end of last year, and they are tasked with um advising the school committee on special education programs. And they have been highlighting literacy as an area of concern and interest over the past two years. And in those two years, obviously, two things happened. First, COVID, which undoubtedly made teaching literacy a lot more difficult. Um, and second, at the start of 2020, the Department um of Elementary and Secondary Education released new dyslexia guidelines. So what you'll see in this presentation, something that I think is important, is how our educators um identify potential dyslexia and support our struggling readers. And um, there will also be a larger presentation on Monday, May sixteenth, which is this Monday. Um, if you want, you know, this is kind of like the movie trailer, and the feature film will come to theaters near you on Monday. Um, I think it will be recorded, Kristin, and this, and if you attend on Monday, um, you can ask questions. It's more of a back and forth, which we won't be able to do here tonight. So I encourage anyone with as much interest in this as me to um attend on Monday. Thanks, Kristin.
So if I could just have Erin show the slides, and all of the eleven committee members um who are present and presenting, um, turn on their videos so we can see you when you speak. Great, so tonight, as Alexa said, we're just going to do a summary. Um, and you actually have a beautiful graphic summary right on your table. It's on the table set up, so you can see. Yeah, it's beautiful because it's quite a process that we go through to identify students who struggle in different arenas. So we do, um, tonight's presentation will be on reading. We also look at writing, math, socio-emotional, and behavior. So today, we're just talking about reading because of dyslexia, um, but we do have these kinds of uh presentations and systems in every area. So um, next slide, please, Erin. So uh, as Alexa said, the Department of Education came out with a um process of best practices for a multi-tiered system of support, and that's what you're going to hear about tonight. As I said, we were going to focus on reading because at the same time, they also came out with dyslexia guidelines. How to identify and intervene on behalf of students who are struggling with uh dyslexia. And I'm happy to say, we had great systems in place, um, and now we've made them consistent across the school district from pre-K to twelve. Next slide, please.
We can go to the next slide, Kristin.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Stevenson. I'm a grade-one teacher at Thoreau. The MTSS committee was made up of uh classroom teachers, special educators, reading, and ELA specialists and principals. Our goal was to develop an annual three-screening protocol for the district. This protocol will ensure equitable and immediate access to reading support for all students, early screening and prompt interventions for all students, the ability to address dyslexia early and in general education as risk factors for dyslexia can be detected prior to formal reading. We know that screening for risk is critical for effective and efficient intervention, and we can provide evidence-based practices for students with dyslexia. Um, our work in doing that, we have been consulting with DESI's Dyslexia Guidelines as well as other resources. Next slide. Next slide.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tara Vanoudy. I am a literacy specialist and reading specialist at Thoreau Elementary School. Uh, the definition here on the screen comes to us from the Massachusetts Dyslexia Guidelines. At the heart of it, dyslexia is a learning disability in reading. Individuals with dyslexia have more difficulty reading at a good pace and reading without mistakes. They can also experience difficulties with reading comprehension, spelling, and writing. But these difficulties are not a problem with intelligence. In fact, they often occur despite average to above-average intelligence. People with dyslexia do not outgrow it, but there are teaching approaches and strategies that can improve their skills and help them manage their challenges. Identifying individuals with dyslexia and providing them with these approaches is key. Knowing more about the subtypes of dyslexia that are listed on the bottom of the screen can also help us as educators to really target the child's individual needs. You can advance. Here you see a filing cabinet. The subtypes can sort of, we can think about the subtypes using this thought. Individuals with the phonological subtype aren't going to the right drawer or pulling the correct file. It's a difficulty with accuracy of reading. For example, when they encounter the word "big," B-I-G, they may produce the word "beg," confusing vowel sounds. Individuals then with the naming speed subtype of dyslexia have difficulty with the efficiency of their reading. They know what drawer to go to, they know what file to pull. Their reading is often very accurate, but it's very slow, and it feels very labored. Individuals then with the double deficit subtype have these combined challenges. Part of the work of this committee is to research approved screening tools for these dyslexic subtypes so that our instruction once again can be extremely tailored to meet the so that our instruction once again can be extremely tailored to meet the individual needs of our dyslexic learners. You can advance. This visual illustrates the key pieces of reading that need to be explicitly taught and understood as students build their reading process. In order for the reading process to be automatic and fluent, we need these pieces to build a solid reading foundation. If any of these pieces are missing or ill-formed, the puzzle's not going to fit together and that foundation of reading will not exist. You can't build a house on a foundation that isn't strong. So we need to make sure as teachers that we're teaching these, and if they're not strong in students, how can we strengthen them using various methodologies? Next slide, please. This visual highlights key points about dyslexia, such as the fact that it has a genetic component and it's the most common learning disability affecting 15% to 20% of the population. However, when an individual with dyslexia is identified and offered literacy instruction, that is, multisensory, bottom-up approach, phonics-based, and systematic, they can and they do demonstrate growth. Advance, please. Sally Shaywitz and her husband are experts in the field of education and dyslexia. She's the author of the book Overcoming Dyslexia, and she originated the Sea of Strengths model. She believes that dyslexic individuals with weaker skills in decoding, spelling, and writing are cocooned by a sea of positives or strengths that we can't overlook. This could be in the form of creativity, vocabulary, intuition, critical thinking. I'd like to add artistic ability, musical ability, empathy. Intervention that is designed to take these strengths into account can not only help the self-esteem of our dyslexic learners, but it can increase the effectiveness of our intervention. And this then is at the heart of our work as the MTSS team.
My name is Sharon Hain, and I am the ELA specialist for Willard School. And I'd like to discuss with you, once that we have identified and determined what our children need, we can then look at interventions. And at the very core, as you see, this is a framework, at the very core, tier one, which is the purple section, is where all children receive core instruction. And so if we're thinking of the reading area, all children will receive core instruction in their decoding skills and all of those other puzzle pieces that Tara just showed us. So every child will be exposed to core instructional practice and instruction. Now, 80% of children given this instruction will be fine with this level of instruction. But then we have, as you can see with tier two, 15% of a typical school age population that will need tier-two intervention, and that could look like double dose. And that usually takes place in a small group. That can take place in the regular classroom, in a small group, but it's using highly qualified and high-quality interventions that includes the targeted skill that the student needs the intervention with. The frequency of intervention is determined, and there is documentation of student progress consistently throughout the period of intervention. And we call that progress monitoring. Now, if a child in a tier-two intervention is making success and showing progress, that child can go back to the tier-one instruction without having that tier-two intervention. It's a fluid model. But however, if that child who has had tier-two intervention, when a data team meets and the child's progress is not showing either improvement or it may have languished, then perhaps tier-three intervention is in place. And the difference between tier-three and tier-two, tier-three intervention continues to use high-quality instruction that targets the skill of weakness or the skill that's impacting the child's ability to read. However, the group size is smaller, anywhere from three at the most to individual, and there could be an increase in the frequency of time met in this group. This takes place outside the classroom, and typically, this could be an intervention that would be done with the reading specialist or the ELA specialist. Again, documentation of student response to the intervention is frequently done. The next slide also shows another look at this, but from a different perspective. As you can see, there's the three tiers of intervention, but what makes this slide unique, and this is a slide that DESI uses as well, is that there's a very coordinated and collaborative process. There is equity embedded in all the tiers of intervention. Every single child will have their tier-one instruction. Even with a child who has tier-two or tier-three intervention, they are always present for tier-one instruction. There's a leadership team that in the area of reading consists of administration, consists of ELA specialist, reading specialist, a classroom teacher, the ELL specialist, and could also include special ed staff as well. It's competency-driven, research-based content and methodology, and competency-driven with frequent progress monitoring. Next slide.
Erin, next slide, please. I'm not sure if Fran's on, and maybe I'll just jump in for her. So when-
I'm sorry. I'm on. Yep, we got technical difficulties all over. I'm sorry. All right. We are going to talk a little bit about needs and where we were at. We were fortunate that when Massachusetts Dyslexia Guidelines came out and they put together their cycle and what they'd like to see in Massachusetts, we were very well-prepared as a district. As we all came together to do this work, we realized that we did have a solid foundation. And what we needed to do was just put the practice into policies throughout every single school within the district. We are fortunate that we have a lot of resources, both staffing and materials, to do this effectively and that our students are making progress. Next slide. And this slide talks a little bit more about how the process goes September right through June. So the first one was a half-year cycle. This is the full-year cycle and is really targeted towards what we will be doing every school. And every data team will be looking at the screeners, taking progress, monitoring, meeting with their data teams, and doing their interventions and coming back to the table. And it's a very targeted approach. Next slide. And this is-
Joyce.
Yep. I'm Joyce Carter, the language arts specialist at Thoreau School. This is the beginning of year slide that shows what the benchmarks that we use are. So at the beginning of the year, teachers give multiple assessments to plan tier-one instruction. Our expectation is that all students find an entry point where they can learn, believe in themselves, and not be afraid to try. From the very beginning of the year, teachers are establishing classroom routines as they assess and get to know their students. The assessments that we give at the beginning of the year provide data that we can compare across time to assess learning. We give the same assessments at the middle of the year and the end of the year. The results of these assessments provide baseline data for each student and also help teachers group students for instruction. The data also informs appropriate tiers of instruction and is used to decide the instructional focus. This slide looks at how our common assessments work together, not only to inform tier-one instruction, but also the risk factors of dyslexia. Next slide.
Hello, I'm Nancy Booton. I'm a reading specialist and special education teacher at CCHS. I'll be presenting the next few slides focusing on our data team meetings. The data team meetings are composed of any number of school personnel ranging from general educators, administrators, specialists, and instructional experts. Data team membership varies depending on the grade level. Next slide, please. The data team is responsible for, obviously, using data to inform their decisions. The data team will use information from screenings, evaluations, benchmarking, and progress monitoring to determine the need for intervention and appropriate targeted intervention. Next slide, please. The outcomes of data meetings is to assign the appropriate tier or tiers of instruction to provide instructional focus area for students who demonstrated some risk and provide an arrangement of student groups for tiers two and three intervention. Next slide.
Hi, I'm Katie Carr. I'm the ELA specialist at Alcott. So I'm going to talk a little bit about progress monitoring. Once an instructional focus area has been determined, strategic groupings have been made and the intervention has been selected, we progress monitor the efficacy of the intervention and the student's response to the intervention. So we always strive to design our instruction to be both diagnostic and prescriptive. Progress monitoring assessments are meant to be very quick so that they don't take away from precious instructional time that we have with the kids. We use CBMs or curriculum-based measures to monitor areas of weakness. So every eight to 10 weeks, colleagues gather for progress monitoring meetings. The meetings provide time for colleagues to analyze and interpret the rate at which the student is or sometimes is not responding to the intervention and to make shifts either to the student groupings, to the intensity of the intervention, or by evaluating the efficacy of the program. Next slide.
I think this is Sharon.
So, hold on one second. So data team meeting number two consists of, again, after we've worked and made adjustments and worked with children on their area of targeted skill need, we meet again after progress monitoring. And tier-two, the data meeting for tier-two, again, is to take a look at how students are progressing and how their targeted areas are improving with any kind of the tier-two or tier-three instruction. And as you can see, some of the areas that have been identified of reading skill area are the areas that would be worked on in either small group or individual, depending on the level of intervention that's needed. So progress monitoring continues. Next slide.
So as Sharon said, after the progress monitoring meeting, we go back to our instructions. So we make any necessary adjustments to the groupings and to the intervention themselves, and then teachers continue to progress monitor as they instruct. It's also worth noting that progress monitoring is most valuable when there are multiple data points that have been charted during each assessment cycle. So progress, as we've seen, can often be very erratic. So it's crucial to have several data points as well as a true eight to 10 weeks of intervention time in order to truly determine the rate at which a student is progressing. Next slide.
So the middle-of-the-year benchmark gives us a comparison of growth from the beginning of the year. Again, we are looking for progress using the same measurements that we did at the beginning of the year. Now we can ask ourselves if our instruction is supporting all of our students. The MTSS system needs to respond to students based on their need. Every year, we get a new group of students. Our kindergarteners move up into first grade. They may or may not have the same needs, and our core instruction needs to respond to that. We also look for patterns that may be consistent with dyslexia or a specific learning disability. We need to engage in this continuous improvement process year after year. Our goal is to meet students where they are in their reading journey. Next slide.
Hi, everyone. I'm Debbie Dixon, interim director of Student Services. Regardless of what tier a child may be in, a referral to special education may occur at any time in the process if there's a suspected disability. MTSS is not intended to delay a referral to special education. The special education team will use the data and information from the tiered interventions and the progress monitoring to assist in its evaluation. The special education evaluation is comprised of a range of comprehensive diagnostic assessments completed by a multidisciplinary team that assesses for a range of underlying skills that support the acquisition of reading and language development. The assessments used by Concord and Concord-Carlyle are those recommended by researchers in the field and are considered the gold standard for evaluation when assessing for reading disabilities and dyslexia. Next slide, please. Once a comprehensive evaluation identifies the need for services, supports, and interventions, and the need for an IEP in the area of reading, we would develop an IEP with interventions that focused on the targeted area of need, foundational skill, and we would then use evidence-based, research-based methodology, which needs to be multisensory, systematic, and sequential. We would provide direct and explicit-
Your voices are like- Everyone mute. Please mute if you're on Zoom. Thank you.
It's critically important to implement any intervention with fidelity. In special education, we would provide individual or small group instruction. We would bring a student to mastery level, and we must coordinate the instruction across all settings, both general ed and special education. And we must provide sufficient practice, so there must be an intensity to the intervention. In addition, we would provide the student with technologies to allow that child to circumvent the reading challenges and use technologies to access the curriculum. And we would also work with students to help them understand, developmentally appropriately, to help them understand brain research, their learning style, metacognitive strategies, and we would work with them to overcome the frustrations of having a reading disability so that they become confident learners. Next slide.
Okay, and just to recap, this is the cycle schedule that all the schools are using throughout the two districts, and it is basically an assessed- and it is basically an assessment, progress monitoring, intervention, data team cycle that continues September to June.
Great, thank you. Erin, you can stop sharing the screen, and I think committee members, if you can stay on with your cameras on, and we can answer any questions the school committee might have. We talked a lot about data tonight, so just to pique your interest to the June presentation, when we'll be actually giving you what the data says, because by that point, we'll have the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year data from all our students, so you can see how they've made progress. K to, we test all the way up through grade nine. So this is our matching system, what kids need specifically in every area of reading, and then how we give it to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Committee members, are there questions?
I have a question. What types of data using K to five? Like, what are you using for your assessments, K to five?
Yep, so we use a Department of Education certified, research-based screener called the STAR 360. And so in grades K and one, we use their early literacy piece, and then in grades, somewhere along grade one, but definitely by grade two, we get into just the full reading. So we can assess all the way through, and we use it all the way through the high school.
And I might have heard from my kids that they're doing stars right now. So it's happening right now. The end of the year testing.
End of year, yeah. You can't do it on the very last day.
So it's star K through 12, right up?
Stars K through, we use it through grade 10.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's hard to single out what's more impressive than any other piece of the presentation, because it seems so very comprehensive in our skill sets. Among the teaching staff seems so impressive, which of course they are. I will tell you what I picked up, which Kristin will come, is no surprise to you. Joyce's statement, "Meet them where they are." That idea of bringing teachers into place around a child quickly, even when they move from teacher to a teacher, which has always been a challenge for any district. And clearly, we're closing that gap of time, which is so critical. And then Debbie references the coordination, which is a real keystone to all of us, too. So now, another comment that won't surprise you. Can we expect this will even support our summer school efforts?
Yep, we use all the same tools in summer school, yep, that we use during the school year. So we give the students the STAR 360 at the end of the school year, and then those scores carry them into summer school. So we have four weeks of summer school for students who are at risk in reading. Yep.
And I think we should note, the summer school is pretty unusual, pretty exceptional for a school district.
And no cost.
And no cost to our students, yes. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank all the members of the committee. I know they put a lot of work into this, and I know it's a journey, especially with MTSS being a new concept. So it looks like you're weaving it in nicely into literacy, but I'm sure we'll be seeing it more and sprinkled throughout the rest of our curriculum. So that's great. And again, I want to thank everybody. I know this is a lot of work.
Yeah, it's an amazing team. Fantastic.
So I had a question, one thing that I. So as I was listening to the presentation, when you were bringing up all the committee members that it took to really draw on their perspectives about the student needs. I saw that Andrew and Mackie was also included in that, in that group. So the cultural competency piece and understanding where the kids are is embedded. So it's really nice to see. Some of my committee members may know that I do have a child with dyslexia. So this is a topic that is very close to my heart. And I, you know, once you have a child with a disability, you become an expert of that disability because you will move the world to help your child. And I think that goes for any parent. I also have a very good, I do have firsthand experience with Landmark School and what they do. So I'm really excited to see that Landmark Outreach is coming to help our district build a stronger program around the literacy. The only question that I, there are a couple of questions that I ran into as I was listening to the presentation. And with a grain of salt, that it's really encompassing K through 12. So it's not necessarily talking about the high school, but it's talking broadly. And I guess at some point, we will have more focused presentation just on the high school, as the needs are very, very different. Literacy, the needs are very different. But the thing that I saw on one of the slides is this idea that we are shifting the balance. I, the thing that I can't understand is why are we still shifting the balance where landmark schools are very, very clear about there is no shift that we, you know, the shift has happened to structured literacy. As he talks about this dyslexia guidelines, talk about the philosophy of teaching, not queuing the students, and also the methodology that it's structured, explicit literacy for the kids at the high school. There is no, you know, look at the context, does what you read make sense? So how is this going to work with Landmark and their mission and how they teach? And how is this, you know, how are we going to help bring all of our educators to what is the current, well, widely-accepted research methodology and philosophy of teaching children with reading disability? And I applaud the district that your presentation actually shows that it's not about just special education children. We do forget that. Most people, the public thinks that it is just the children on IP. No, it's the children that don't do well on MCAS on your reading, the children that so often are pulled out in tier two in small group supports to work on different skills. So this really makes such a huge difference on education of all of our students. And from what Potakeet District has shown, that those methods, really working hard as teachers, moves all of our kids to be better readers, have better comprehension, do better in school. So if you can just answer that, and I'll have one more question.
Sure, I'm happy to, and then maybe have Debbie jump in.
Yes.
So one thing that makes us pretty unique is that we actually do have MTSS system in our high school. It's pretty common to have what used to be called an RTI, Response to Intervention System, in the elementary school. And with dyslexia, as we know, it's critical to identify students with dyslexia in those first early grades. But we also have it at our middle school and high school with interventionists at the middle school and high school. Those two things, having a system, giving the screener, and then having the interventionist at the middle school and high school makes us really unique. There are very, very few school districts that have that. In fact, people are coming to us to learn that. And I would, I'll defer to Debbie to talk about Landmark. But we have had, I do want to mention that we have many experts coming in and helping us with this. Dr. Nadine Gabb, who's an expert in the science of reading, has been providing professional development. Dorsey Yearley, who used to be the special ed director in Wellesley Public Schools and works for Athene, she's also been providing some support for our teachers, particularly at the middle school on co-teaching. So how do you give this instruction right in the general ed classroom? So, and then we have a full program working with Landmark. Debbie, can you talk about that?
Sure. So Landmark Outreach, with whom the district is consulting currently and will be throughout the next several years, I imagine, will be providing ongoing professional development to its language-based special education program at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. And not only will the professional development be provided to special education teachers in the language-based program, but also to the partner teachers in general education. And what they will provide will be best practice in terms of supporting students with reading and learning disabilities in the general ed environment. So that learning for our gen ed teachers will expand for the number of teachers who are working in concert with our language-based programs. Landmark Outreach is also providing instruction through one of our PD paths next year. So we hope that that is well subscribed to. And they, with greater knowledge and greater expertise and with that professional development, the gen ed teachers will be better able to support students with best practices in the gen ed classrooms. And that's where the carryover comes in partnership between special ed and general ed will work to best support our students with the same practices, both in special ed and in general ed. In terms of structured literacy, I think there's, without getting into the details of it, because it's not, and we're talking about tiered system of support here, but the structured literacy is really focused at the primary level when we're talking about decoding and the code of the language. And that's where we really need to focus the structured literacy so students can decode and learn to read. And then once the students have the code, they should be able to read any literature, any leveled text, any, any book that we put in front of them. And when they can't, that's when our tiered system of support needs to step in and intervene and provide the instruction with intensity to get them to mastery level so they're successful. And hopefully, it's done well before high school.
Yeah, and I had one more question, if I may. So we have, of course, we have, we have some, we have struggling students, struggling readers in our high school. My question is, looking at MTSS and also like, and also keeping in mind that when we're talking about high school, we're preparing these young individuals now to be college-ready, to be career-ready. So I wonder what, what kind of measures we as a school are taking because, to prepare, to give these kids, especially to, in a changing time of college admissions, where there is such the emphasis on SATs and SATs and emphasis on college preparedness, showing that you are able to take challenging classes. So how are we able to support these kids, you know, when they are struggling with reading? Like, what are the offerings that will, what is the school doing to showcase their talents and, you know, what are, showcase their talents, their college preparedness, that they can challenge themselves? Like, how are we developing these kids?
Nice, yeah. So maybe Nancy, can I ask you to answer that one since you work with our students who struggle with reading at the high school? Every single day, every single year.
Every day, yes.
I just tell you one thing, she makes it fun. I know that.
Lots of fun, yes, we do. So we, I mean, it starts really where we look at our baseline data and we identify students who are struggling. And then we do, we delve in further, and we do further benchmark testings to see specific areas of need. And then we will group students according to what their deficiencies are. You know, so if it's a decoding, encoding, and fluency, we can provide instructional support in that area and then progress monitor as we go along. If it's comprehension skills that we're working on, we'll incorporate interventions and then we'll continue to progress monitor and do benchmark testings every few months. And then if it's writing, we have support for writing. But, you know, I mean, it's ongoing, and we just continue to build the interventions around what our students' needs are.
I was just gonna add to that, Nancy. This is Francis Wolfe from the high school. A lot of the kids that are in the cohort for, for language-based that are struggling readers have a profile of strengths and weaknesses. And so it's very individualized as to where the child is. They might be extremely, you know, gifted in the area of math. And we do have kids that are in honors levels math, AP math, that fit the profile of a dyslexic learner. So while we are giving very targeted instruction in their area of need, we are in no way holding them back in areas where they can shine. And that's important to the students, especially at the high school level, to feel good about themselves as learners and to really understand their learning profile.
So it would be under, under-level classes, like, for example, in liberal arts, that they could showcase their college preparedness versus the AP classes for these kids?
Yep.
And is the school looking to expand more opportunities for these kids?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think what we're trying to do is make our general education classes more and more accessible for students at all reading levels. So, you know, you've heard a lot from experts in the field right now who are working in our schools, and we want to expand that even more to all our teachers, that level of expertise. And, you know, given the choice, many, many of our general educators sign up for classes, like I mentioned, Dr. Nadine Gabb this year. So I'm really excited for it. Yeah. So with that, I want to thank the committee members. You guys have worked all day, and now you're up late at night. And you are wonderful, wonderful, so please feel free to exit. And I also want to thank Erin Higgins for advancing the slides. No small piece of work.
As I demonstrated.
Thank you very much.
That's great. People to see in the eight to 10 weeks of testing, staying on top of it. It's important for everyone to know that these kids are being watched, they're being cared for, and being supported. So thank you. Okay, with that, we come to Jared, our variance report.
Okay, so I'll start with the 1,000s. So Jared, did you grab a one pack? So right now, I sent you the 1,000s as well as the 100s. As of the 5th of May, we had just over a $1.5 million unencumbered balance. I looked at this time, actually, last year, when I reported out around the 21st of May. We were a little bit higher than this. We were actually about $1.573 million. But we had already encumbered, if you remember, the $368,000 for the freshman laptops. So really, that balance is closer to 1.9. So right now, as you can see, we are, we are in balance. We are tracking well. And I do anticipate us to have a surplus this year. It's still a little bit too early for me to exactly pinpoint exactly where it is, but I do have, I do have some projections for you. Right now, very early, I do expect us to end with an available balance between $500,000 and $800,000. It could be a little bit higher once we start liquidating POs. But of this $1.5 million, 600 of this is reserved to reduce the budgets, the E and D. So we have to end with a, at least a surplus of $600,000, or you'll have to use E and D available balance to fund it. So I'm anticipating having at least $600,000 as an available balance, plus an additional $500,000 to $800,000 at this time. Including in this, I do anticipate to have full circuit breaker balance to carry over, like we've had the last few years. That's about $792,000. So that's, 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 that's a good balance that we've had. At least since I've been here, we've had full circuit breaker. I think, I think I inherited that, yeah. I do have a couple of recommendations, and I'll continue to talk to Dr. Hunter, as well as Ian Rames, who has closed our books really for the past 10 years. So he knows how to close these books. And we definitely share the same philosophy on what we recommend. So in no particular order, maybe the first one would be, my first recommendation is to prepay tuitions. We have done that, again, since I've been here. Last year, we prepaid about $450,000 that you approved. I anticipate being able to try and prepay. I anticipate being able to try and prepay anywhere from 350,000 to 450,000. Another option would be to potentially prepay the, the computer for the freshman class. You could buy another electric bus. Right now, the wait time or the lead time is anywhere from seven, eight months to 12 months. My other recommendation actually would be if there's any money left over after you made any decisions on that, to put it into the stabilization account and be able to use that to offset any future capital costs.
Jared, can you tell us where the stabilization account stands right now?
So after the 200,000, I think there was anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 in it. So once that 200,000 is used to offset this project that was just voted at town meeting, and once, if it is approved in Concord in September, you'll have about 200, two, I'm sorry, 2,000 to 4,000.
Yeah, so we intentionally exhausted it and left pocket change behind, so to speak.
Keep it alive.
Thank you. Yeah.
I would just add, Jared spent a lot of time with Bob Conry already and with Ian and with me. And there's a really solid transition plan in place for the next two months, as well as Bob's entry. Bob will be back. Well, he's meeting with you again this week. He'll be back in district in person for the admin meeting that we have on the 24th. And then two days in June, and one of those nights, which will be, I think it's the 14th, he'll be here to, you know, be at the school committee meeting. So he's already had these discussions with Jared, so he's in complete synchronization with us on what we shared. And we'll probably continue a three-way dialogue off and on right on through till July.
Yeah. But the, the, the good thing is, is again, we're in balance, even in a year that is somewhat unpredictable, even with the YesR monies and everything, we've been able to stay in balance. There is one negative, if you caught that, in the 100 function, and that is the security account. That's just due to right now, where we'll make an adjustment to the parking lot account to charge some salaries there and that negative will go away.
And, and it wasn't a lot of money.
It was 26,000.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Do you need, I, I know different school committees may do this differently. Do you need a approval on light item transfers? And if so, do you need it now? Or do you need it as a final sweep end of year? What?
No, that has not been, we have not had that. It's just reporting them to you all is, and the auditors are okay with that.
Thank you.
So I'll be following up and you'll probably at least remotely join me as we get through into June to revisit the prepay options and the other options as the numbers get tighter. It's too early to bring you numbers to recommend us. So we'll do that as we get through June. So welcome.
And just so you know, some business managers prefer to not make transfers, and that's okay. I just like to keep it in balance, but it's not required as long as you're in the black, the bottom line.
And I noticed Melanson is back on board. Are they physically on board with us right now?
They are physically back on board. There's been some delay due to COVID, due to COVID in their, in their, at their firm. So we are still, we're continuing to work with them and still have some finishing pieces on the audit.
Great. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I'm sure Jared, this was your last meeting with us, so I'm sure the members would like to go around and just say thank you.
I am just getting to know you, Jared, so I just, it's been wonderful working with you. Thank you so much for all that you've given to this community, to our kids, to the school district. You're, you've been nothing but professional and kind, and you bring a sense of humor and possibility and creativity. And I've just gotten to know that over the last few months. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Best of luck.
I thought I had one more meeting. This is really a bummer for me. I'm really sad to see you go. I mean, I really am. I think that you've been a breadth of fair share at the business office, and I think that we've all really learned a lot from you. You certainly helped me as a new member coming onto this committee, doing, you know, a quick little budget 101. And you're going to be really missed. And, and I, you know, we will continue on, but know that we will continue to think of you. We wish you the best of luck at St. John's Prep. Your commute's going to be amazing. So that's great. But, you know, I'm sad to see you go. So thank you for all your time, all the late nights. There have been lots of, lots of late meetings this year. And even last year, I mean, this, before I came on the committee, this entire committee, along with the three of you, met weekly during COVID. So I appreciate the time away from your family and the time away, you know, just from life and the Celtics game that's happening tonight. I'm sure.
It's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow. Sorry.
Not a fan, not a fan.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And you'll be missed.
You scared me.
No, it's all right. I must be ruined for something.
Yeah, it could be. So Jared, Tracy mentioned COVID, all the work you did in procurement. You know, that's a huge lift for two districts. The tables, the chairs, I, I know, I see it in my district, you know, you get a table, no, it's the wrong table. You have to go get another table. It's, you know, this isn't, this isn't going to work due to the new state health guideline. So I know it's just a total scramble. And then on top of that, we had to negotiate six bargaining units last year, which?
Seven.
Oh, my gosh, say that wrong again. Seven. So that's just, it was, it's so much work when you look back on it. All the work you did was zero-based budgeting. So I really appreciate it and very good, good luck. And I know you're going to enjoy, it's going to be a different environment, so it'll be a fun new challenge. So thank you.
You and I, or I should say, I had the benefit of four years. I hope you did as well. I think it was a relationship where we had a, probably a few hundred hours, much of it in negotiations over those four years. And I think you brought a wonderful degree of calm and professionalism to every one of those sessions that helped us be where we are right now in a positive and really robust support for our kids. And I don't think you took your eye off that ball. So thank you for that. Often, we don't talk about students when we do some of this financial work, some of the negotiation work, but it was never lost on you. And, and you know that. So I want to thank you for that. St. John's is going to be the beneficiary. I think you're bringing most of your family over there. So I hope it all works out, and I'm absolutely sure it will. Our loss, and I wish you very well. Thank you.
This is awful. We will miss you so much. And I'm surprised we've gotten through five or so comments and no one's mentioned. And it's just something that sticks with me from the beginning, how fractured our relationship, this body, I mean, the relationship was with our finance committee. I remember as a younger parent, always going to PTG meetings where there would be these frenzied meetings about how the school committee budgets weren't in alignment with the finance committee budgets because there just wasn't great communication between the two bodies. And what is so wonderful is that you, in such a short time, turned that on its head and fixed it. And like everyone else has said, it's because you're honest, approachable, fun, trustworthy, transparent, every single thing that you would want any administrator to be. And I'm really bummed. I'm going to miss you. I have fun with you. You are, you make meetings great and enjoyable. And you do it while doing excellent work. And that combination is just so rare and exceptional that, I don't know, poor Bob. He'll, he'll get there. He needs some tough shoes to fill, but we're optimistic. So Jared, you're the best. Have the greatest time and stay in touch.
I remember when I came into this district three years ago, you both were the first people I saw that I met, actually before meeting my, the other school committee members. Oh, sorry. So three years ago, you were the first people, Laurie, Dr. Laurie Hunter, and you were the first people that I've, I've met before I met the, my school, my colleagues, the school committee members. Today, Carlisle has, I'm on a ballot in Carlisle, so we have a big election. So I might not be here next time around. But the one thing that I, I, I want to call attention of, of, of people is to understand that we are a very intense district. We have high expectations. And the amount of work that is required from the team is, I don't think, is seen in other places. And you have been going to meeting after meeting, you've been, I always see you. I don't know how that balance work, works for you, but grateful for, you know, being there, explaining, bringing that expertise, financial expertise, and explaining in layman term, terms what the numbers mean to people that need continued, continued support, understanding those numbers and reminders. The E and D is this. This is the term. Chapter 70 means this. And, and being patient with us. I wish you luck. I hope your balance of work, work balance gets better. And we're grateful for all the time that you have given to this committee and to the kids and our district.
Thank you. Jared, I got to know you mostly through the negotiations last year. And I mean, the level of attention and thought and, and consideration for so many different factors was really commendable. I mean, it brought, it brought a new appreciation to the complexities of, of, of the work that, that I just couldn't have imagined. So I really appreciated all of that. And, and I just wish you and your family the best. Very beloved, and you'll be missed.
I can't, I can't say much. No, I won't. It's too hard, but it's my only public opportunity. And I don't know how I would have done this job for the last four years without Jared. He's my right hand on everything from money on down. He's meaning me in with taking a few long weekends here and making me do it without him. So I'm getting, getting used to it. But we wouldn't be where we are without him. And I'm going to stop it. He knows how I feel.
Well, thank you, everybody. I didn't, didn't want that at all. Now I'm choked up. You know, I've, I've enjoyed my time here. I've met some wonderful, awesome, awesome people. The kids here are amazing. Something is in the water because I think they would succeed with anyone. But I, I truly enjoyed the community. I love the finance committee meetings. Those were super fun. They speak my language. I will miss that. And, you know, this district is, is a great district, and there's going to be a lot of great things to come, and I'll be watching. And my phone call away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and on to court policy, Metco School Committee representative, the first reading. Oh, I should, sorry, I should stake the cert.
Certainly. So the Policy Subcommittee and the Superintendent have done what I hope you'll find is good work in terms of a policy recommendation for a non-voting member from our Metco community to the school committee. Give me a moment. I'll find the right piece of paper. Here we go. If we adopt a policy whereby there is a Metco representative to the Concord and Concord Carlisle school committees, we will be the fourth school district in the Metco consortium to do that. So we're not the first, but we're among the first. The first was fully 20 years ago, two more districts somewhat recently. And I believe, and the Subcommittee believes, it's time for Concord and Concord Carlisle to follow on. I know Dr. Hunter does as well. We don't believe that we're going to make everybody happy, but we do want to make our thinking and our recommendation visible to you so you know how we got where we are. It is on the screen. I'll read it for the benefit of people in the audience and then speak to it. This is a first reading, which means the school committee has time to ponder it, to receive more community input, which we actively seek from all of our constituents and very notably, our Metco constituents and Metco families. And if the school committee sees fit, it will have on the agenda for May 24, a second reading whereupon the school committee could adopt this policy. And it would be in place by the end of the year so that we would commence the new year with this representative. So a, a quick read, if the chairs will indulge me, is that going to be helpful? Because I'm not sure this is too visible. Hearing no objection. The Concord Carlisle School Committee, in addition to its regular members and its student representatives, will have one non-voting representative who shall represent families participating in the Concord and Concord Carlisle Metco program. In addition, there shall be an alternate who will act on behalf of the representative in their absence. The Metco representative will be authorized to sit at all open sessions of the school committee and to discuss matters of concern in a fashion similar to school committee members. In addition, the Metco representative may accept other responsibilities, including committee assignments as determined and assigned by the chairs of the Concord and Concord Carlisle school committees. The Metco representative shall be chosen by Boston resident Metco families via a biannual election for a two-year term. All Boston resident Concord or Concord Carlisle Metco parents or guardians will be eligible for this position. An election will take place through a fair and open process determined by the Superintendent's Metco Advisory Council. The Metco representative will be eligible for renomination, provided that the representative is still a parent guardian or guardian of a current Boston resident Metco student in the Concord or Concord Carlisle schools. If a vacancy occurs, the Superintendent's Metco Advisory Council may nominate a person for appointment to complete the unexpired two-year term. Let me speak to what we have heard from various constituents, including the Metco Families Collective, where we have not been able to fully satisfy all constituent recommendations. One recommendation was that there be two Metco representatives, specifically one for K8 and one for 912, or in effect, the two school committees. Secondly, that there be a Zoom option. And although that for the school committee is up to the legislature, it's certainly within our purview to enable it for the Metco representative because they would not be an elected person subject to those laws. Third, that a request was made that 25% of the school committee meetings be held in the city of Boston. And that has not been included in our recommendation tonight. It's, we're still working on trying to physically get to Carlisle more often, I, I believe. But that's for discussion by the committee and anybody who wishes to weigh in. Next recommendation was that there be a stipend for the, the burdens of travel from Boston. Very understandable burden, quite different than Concord and Carlisle. At present, we do not stipend our volunteers, although there is a Metco account in our revenue accounts that perhaps could be used for this purpose. The, there was a recommendation that former Metco parents be considered for election. And the Subcommittee's recommendation is that at the outset, the representative be a current member. Although if in their two-year term, they fell off that status, they would continue to represent Metco if they so chose. And there was a recommendation that the newly formed Metco Families Collective be the governing body or the, the body that would manage elections. And for reasons of full inclusion, with records of Metco families known only to the administration, we believe this belongs within the hands of the Superintendent's Metco Advisory Committee. And finally, and perhaps most critical, And finally, and perhaps most critical in the opinion of some people, there was the recommendation to hope that this would be a voting representative under the law, as well as under the Concord Charter, as well as under the regional agreement. This is not possible. So we did not take that up seriously because it's not in our hands. It is something that's embodied in the law as to who gets to serve in a voting capacity on elected bodies in cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's where we stand. I thank you for your indulgence with all of that, but I wanted to paint as clear a picture as I could, and I wonder if we could turn to other members of the Subcommittee and Dr. Hunter, any other notes that you might add?
I will say, we had lots of discussion as a policy committee over this, and we did outreach to the other three districts that currently have a representative. I went into Boston and Carrie joined me on Zoom to speak to Metco families. We've had some public comment about this. And I guess Lori, do you want to talk about, you had a conversation with our state rep about this?
I did talk to Representative Gueva just to get a sense of her take on it all, and she was very intrigued, for sure. Thought, wow, this probably will come up in other places. There isn't an automatic mechanism, so she was going to do homework on her side, suggested we would have to do the same on the local side, and, you know, it would require some piece of legislation, whether it be municipal or state.
What topic are you talking about?
For a voting member.
So it would have to be a home rule petition, right?
I was just reporting what Tammy said.
No, I didn't understand what topic you were discussing.
Continue if you would, thank you.
Sorry.
I think I've said, I lost my train of thought, so go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that we've gotten a lot of feedback and we're still continuing to work on this policy. Carrie and I will be joining Lori's Superintendent's Advisory Council tomorrow night, and this is definitely one of the topics for discussion, so we're looking forward to that. And I think that's all I had.
I would hope that if this can be improved, it will be improved, but I would also say what you've heard before in other settings, and that is, I would hope that we don't insist on perfect, such that we don't have something good in place this September. I'm not sure what perfect is. If we can get this closer to perfect, yes, but I'd be, I'd be very pleased if we have this, this process at least moving toward representation that doesn't exist now.
I just want to add, we can always reconvene and put it on a calendar now to reconvene and see how this policy is working and helping our representation needs of our students and families in practice. So that's something that we can, we can consider as well. And I just wanted also to add to having, having a student's voice and representation on, they are not, our students are not physically sitting, but if, because Zoom has been so, so conveniently opened up opportunities for students to come in, to, to attend every one of our meetings, but it's basically like having our students sitting with us and bringing their student voices and student experience. I really appreciate getting that student rep expeditiously.
You can thank Ms. Strula.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Well, first of all, thanks. I know a lot of, a lot of time has gone into this and a lot of work. These policies, I am learning, take a lot of time and there's a long process to it, and this has, for all intents and purposes, been fast-tracked in a really good way. I know, obviously not as fast as anyone would want, but it's, thank you to everyone who's put a lot of time into this. I just had a question about the stipend piece. Is there, is there even a mechanism to be able to offer a stipend as part of the policy? This is something that, I mean, it seems really fair to me, and I would love to find a way to make it happen. If we can ensure that it will be part of the Metco program, that would be great, but I, I think that that's a fair request, especially since I think it would be very hard to accommodate the 25% in Boston, but.
Among the few school committee responsibilities that are clearly laid out, one is budget, so the answer is yes, and two is policy.
So it would be written into the budget, yeah.
That's pretty much our domain. Everything else happens through the Superintendent, as you well know. My only request would be that as we investigate that, we also investigate the idea of using the Metco account that is already held internally for that purpose.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, I just think maybe formalizing how, how that would be part of the agreement, that would be my.
Or, or know how the monies are governed in that account so that the decision makers in that account could, could do so. I believe it was in 2014 that the then Metco director came to the school committee, this was before I served on the school committee, and asked that there be a, an account established for Metco gifts and contributions without, and Jared, I suppose, can do some research, or Bob can, and look at whether this is an active account, whether it's holding funds, I don't know. But that was the purpose when it was set up. So the Subcommittee looked at it as a possible way to satisfy this need without producing a new line item or a new budget precedent around stipends for volunteers. But the short answer is yes, we can do.
Dr. Hunter, just coming up.
I was waiting for you to.
Thank you.
Two things. I've done a little research on stipends, and we have more homework to do because Chapter 71, Section 52 is about compensation of school committee members, and it essentially says you can't be compensated without votes potentially in the communities. So I don't think it's complicated. Potentially, we might have to, we're going to have to do more homework.
Okay.
I did ask Ian to pull the history on that Metco revolving account. Hasn't been active in a few years. It had balances that don't appear to, I'll have to have him check to see if there's anything in there right now, but it was more of an in and out type of account, not, not necessarily funded particularly thoroughly or consistently. So there's a tool to work with there. I'm not sure there are funds, so we'll keep researching that.
A lot of people are asking, I mean, reaching out to, that seems narrow, but people are asking the question.
Yeah, we're doing the research. We're not finding answers yet.
Yeah, and so I applaud you for, for doing that and for everybody to look into solutions, right? We've got, we've got a new challenge before us.
And just as a practical matter, to pursue any changes or refinements means perhaps May 24th won't be within our, within our reach. We'll have to see. I appreciate what you said, we're moving as quickly as we can.
Yeah, and we did, we did discuss some of this and not putting into the policy because as we're examining our meeting, you know, protocols and procedures, then it could, you know, that could go into that part of it. So maybe it would be more of like our procedures versus part of the policy.
Thank you.
So I apologize for interrupting you, Dr. Hunter. It wasn't appropriate. One thing that stuck out to me, they were discussing, what do they call, home rule petitions, and they move at a pace that is pretty, yes, we have some three, five, I don't know, and, and we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. And my hunch is though, and I think it would be valuable to get Concord Council opinion on this, because I think even if the home rule petition passed a town meeting, I think the Attorney General would probably rule it, rule it out of order, but he could probably give us a good idea about that because it would set a pretty significant precedent. So I just think it's fair for Metco families to look like we went the extra mile to, you know, to really get a outlook on it so that we wouldn't go to the trouble. But the work of getting a home rule petition together, I don't even think it would make it two-town meeting. And I think that's the only avenue, but maybe Tammy had a better idea, I don't know.
She had homework to do, for sure, but she was going in that direction.
Okay, seems faster than the State House.
Yeah. I don't know about that.
Okay. I just have a little edit that it, the first line should say the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees, right? In addition to their regular members?
Yes.
Yep, that's all.
Sure can, thank you.
Alexa, you have?
No, my question was answered. I think I'm correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, Carrie? No, okay. You looked ready for, ready for something, no? Okay.
So I think it's now a matter of working with administration and convening another Policy Subcommittee meeting after the seating of the Concord Carlisle School Committee meeting on Thursday. We can try to set up a meeting and see how, how quickly we can get that on the books. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And, all right, so that brings us to action items. Dr. Hunter, do you want to talk about the vote to approve staff requests to enroll a child?
Certainly. As we've been doing, when requests come in, we bring them to you for consideration. Teacher at Willard liked to enroll her daughter in kindergarten this coming fall. Although I've shifted new, new families to Alcott, she has other siblings at Willard, so this would be a kindergarten article.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to approve the following staff requests to enroll their children in the Concord Public Schools, Concord Carlisle Regional School District for the 2022-2023 school year, and that tuition be waived. Mary Kate Reed, teacher at Willard, daughter to enroll in kindergarten at Willard.
Your second.
My second.
Okay. Discussion?
Welcome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And now we have a motion to accept a exchange student from Germany, I believe. Yep, CCHS exchange student from Germany.
This is another request through one of the agencies, so all of the homework has been done and we're excited. We continue to get approached because families are willing and interested in hosting, and we are a high school, not everybody's COVID welcoming exchange students yet, so I'm grateful that you're supportive of that, and we ask you to approve that tonight.
Are there?
I'll make a motion that the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve one share exclamation mark, high school exchange program student from Germany at CCHS for the 2022-2023 school year.
Your second.
Okay, discussion?
Quick question. Have you worked for this company before?
No, it's a newer, new agency for us.
We're getting a bunch of new.
Well, when you're, not everybody's accepting kids, I think it's more coming our way.
All right.
Well, we will be a good fish here, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, and now we will return to additional public comment. Are there members of the public in person who would like to speak?
Hi, Chris Kratsley, 79 Hillcrest Road in Concord. I have, see, we've had, well, I'm CCHS class of 87, and we've had a son go through five years of the Concord Public Schools, a daughter at six years and counting, and another little one who will be many, many years in the system when she finally gets into it, so. And at the outset, the initial public comment period, and I suspect there's going to be more of it here, we heard a lot of passion for how wonderful this district is, and a lot of passion urging the school committee to show more compassion and, and, you know, essentially do better in terms of, in terms of how, how you interact with each other and with our superintendent. And I want to speak to the other way in which I think we, as a community, really need to do better, and that is these things that we can do for our Metco community. I think this, what we're talking about right now is important, this seat at the table, but it is really right now the very bare minimum and hopefully the beginning of a lot of steps that need to be taken to better serve this community. These students, we had the benefit, when I was in high school, of serving as a host family for a young man in the Metco program, and we've had the benefit now with our son, while he was in the high school, of serving as a host family for student Metco program. It is such a valuable program, not just for those students to be able to avail themselves of an outstanding educational system like we have here, but also for our students to be able to have a more diverse community and have more diverse perspectives. And right now, sadly, we are failing those students in some pretty substantial ways. We talk about, you know, issues on this committee of how people comport themselves, where we have students, kids, who are being bullied based on their race. We have kids who are facing real microaggressions. We have kids who are facing implicit bias from their teachers. And so giving a voice is the least we can do, certainly giving a vote, if we can, is important. I didn't hear anything, any real explanation of why both an elementary level and an overall level seat weren't possible. That didn't seem to come up in your discussion, so I, I do raise that as a question and an issue. But going beyond that, as you look to your budget, it's going to be important to understand what you can do to provide professional development for all of our teachers, to better serve these students, and how we can have policies in place that are clear and consistent to make sure that nobody is victimized based on their race in our school system.
Thank you.
Not that tall. Thank you. Hi, Melissa Sampson-McMorrow, 301 Concord Street. And at the risk of stating the obvious, being a superintendent is hard, really, really hard, probably one of the hardest jobs I've observed. And in times like this, I just also want to acknowledge that being a school committee member is not an easy task, so thank you all for serving. I believe that people run for the school committee because they care about the school community and they want to make it a better place. I also believe that it is important to assume that every person sitting at this table comes to these, to these roles for those reasons, takes this work seriously, and is acting in good faith. You all have the information and the responsibility, so the hard work is on you, and I encourage you all to continue that hard work that you started in your workshop in March to come to a resolution, and again, thank you all for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Pat Brewer, 132 Wright Road, and I would like to thank the Subcommittee as well as Dr. Hunter and the school committee for the work you are doing for our Metco families. I feel we are a Concord, Carlisle, and Boston community, and I think it is very important to provide a seat or two seats at the table. And my one question is, and Carrie, I really am glad to hear you also support a stipend. I think acknowledging that is an important piece. My question is, the piece on your policy speaks to the Metco representative needs to be, have a student currently in the system, and I know school committee members have kids who might not be in the system anymore, so I'm just curious why Metco would have to be a parent who has a current student. And thank you for your work. COVID has really been a challenge, and for that piece, I also commend you all for keeping our students safe, our teachers and our families, and I look forward to doing the same for our Boston families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Schumacher, 25 Highland Street in Concord. I just have a question, which is, I'm just, I'm a parent of two much older children who went to Thoreau and all the way up through vice. went to Thoreau and all the way up through high school. Why, why can't there be two? I really, I feel strongly that there should be two Metco representatives on the committee. I forget the first person who spoke, I think it was Chris, but I feel it's the least we can do, the absolute least, bare minimum that we can do. And I know that we have two represent, two school committee people from, I think, I believe from Carlisle, and we need two Metco representatives. That's just all there is to it. I mean reparations even. Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Jones, 31 Minut Road. I have two kids in, in, in the Alcott School District. I'm an educator of 15 years. I spent several years working at Concord Carlisle High School in the departments there. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Hunter for all of the work that you've done as a teacher in another school system, I was working in a large urban school district at the time. Concord was the measure by which I compared everybody and their response to COVID with the clear communication, with the research that was going on, with reaching out to families, being transparent about everything that happened in the meantime. I think that the, the treatment that was made plain by the email, which can be neither confirmed nor denied, is disgusting and it's appalling. It shouldn't have happened. It should not continue to happen. It is a stain on this committee. It's a stain on our town. And my father was a chief of the Boston Fire Department. And as a teacher, one of the things that I always use is where there's smoke, there's fire, and you do not let a smoldering fire burn. I think it needs to be addressed quickly, promptly, and satisfactorily. I think we, maybe the committee does not know this, but there is a shortage of administrators and high-quality administrators. They are very difficult to come by. And when this becomes the character of the school system, other administrators will not want to work here. And I think at the very least, an apology to Dr. Hunter, to Jared, to Kristen Herbert, and the nurses is in order and should come by quickly. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Cobbs, 31 Pondview Lane. I'm two years here in Concord. I have a child in Alcott, and we're a Metco family friend. And I have a child in the high school. I came here tonight motivated by all that we've all been learning and really hoping that civility reigns. I think that's very important for all of us. We've all come out of a very difficult time with COVID and everything that goes along with it. My family moved during that time, so it's been really tough, and, and we didn't even have any difficulties with the disease itself yet. So I really encourage you all to take a breath and look at each other more humanely. Please. I'd like to speak about Metco. I am very surprised, coming into the community, that we're still busing children. So my immediate response was a shock, but I understand that this is where we are in Massachusetts today. Greater Boston is still quite segregated, and those are the circumstances of the society and the community of Concord and Carlisle. I do think and support the comments prior that two Metco representatives, I am very hopeful that, that Tammy Govea and others, the Boston Foundation, may be interested in this issue about why they aren't having voting rights across the greater Boston area. And the idea that after 40 years of Metco, that we are the fourth school to, or a school system to allow a school representative is also shocking base to me. In terms of the bullying and so forth that's going on, that's a community issue. And I, as part of this community, I'd like to take responsibility for that as well, because I don't think that's only up to the school system to manage those issues. I think that's really hard for these children. They spend a lot of time on buses and everything else to get here, and when they get here, they don't fight, face a welcoming community. That's, that's a community-wide issue, not just the schools. So I hope that we can all work together as a community to improve those issues. The, the children that I've met through the Metco program are wonderful kids, as we all agree, I'm sure. And one thing that came up at the meeting that the superintendent handled in Boston for the Metco families was why those children aren't, as they come to us through kindergarten all the way through, they're not reaching the AP courses and the higher-level courses. And I think that may too be a community issue that we could address with more help for the schools, more volunteer support, hopefully, to tutor students, whatever can help these students to get to those right levels. I think that's very important. And I think that if we do allow for two school committee members, K through eight, that can really help that issue because they'll be focused on early childhood education. And then for the higher levels, they'll take on different issues, most likely. So with those comments, I'll thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more comments from the public here? If not, no, then I'll go to Colleen Walston on Zoom.
Hi, thank you, Colleen Walston, 1 Hawthorne Village. I want to thank you for the MTSS presentation, and I do look forward to tuning again, tuning in again next week. You recapped some of the dyslexia guidelines and talked about the definition of dyslexia, and I know that everybody on the school committee has read the dyslexia guidelines. So I'm hopeful that next week you can bring information and data into the presentation about what is happening in our schools with our children. What is the protocol when the screener identifies a child as being at risk? If we know, according to your presentation, that dyslexia affects 15 to 20% of the population, what percentage of students have we identified here in Concord? I know we identified a very small percentage, including extremely few in the most critical window for intervention. What intervention programs and materials are we using right now? Are we still using LLI? We know that LLI is a non-evidence-based program based on three-Qing, but we also see that our extended-school-year teachers are expected to be proficient in using level literacy intervention. Is this what we intend to spend SIR funds on? Also, what is the Tier One curriculum used in our elementary schools? The latest district documents indicate that Thoreau is using Fontes Empenel Classroom, and the other two schools will soon follow. We also know that Fontes Empenel Classroom does not meet standards. How long are students kept in RTI before a referral is made for special education? How are parents informed of their child's scores and results? Most parents I know have never received a STAR report. What is used for progress monitoring, and how much progress is enough? Finally, I want to thank the school committee members who do ask questions on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruthie Bennett.
Hi, Ruthie Bennett, 114 Deergrass Lane. I have two children, one 12 years in the Concord Carlisle School Districts and one 11 years. I had the opportunity actually to work with Dr. Hunter at a time when my children were being discriminated against, and I found Dr. Hunter to be compassionate, respectful, and really understanding. We were just one family of many, many families, but I felt that when I met with her, she really understood and took our issues seriously. When I look at the school committee members and I read the email that was sent out about the complaint and, and the conversations that took place, I am embarrassed and humiliated to be someone who voted for these school committee members. School committee is a public service, and you represent people in this community. I, for one, would never condone that kind of behavior. And I would like to publicly apologize to Dr. Hunter. I'm so sorry that you are going through this, have gone through this. You know, if you said that you were bullied on school grounds, we'd be taking it extremely seriously, and never a day would go by without it being looked at. So I hope that we, as a community, can take it as seriously when it happens to an adult as it when it happens to our children. So again, I'm terribly sorry, and I hope that we can change this situation and the ability for the situation to happen very, very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Banfield.
Hi, Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I was a finance committee member for six years, which spanned the administration of the prior superintendent and the incoming administration of Lori and Jared. And the difference between those two administrations, I will personally say, was night and day. The finance committee went from a very contentious and opaque budgeting process that was constantly, you know, at, at odds with each other, to one which became a collaborative process, which while there is inherently an adversarial or somewhat contentious nature to the process of budgeting, it was always collaborative, it was always helpful, and Jared was very transparent in the, in the production of any kind of financial information. So thank you, Jared, for your help with the town, and Lori for really changing and bringing a breath of fresh air to the entire financing, the relationship with finance committee. I served on a finance subcommittee that was formed by the school committee because of the prior poor relationship and lack of understanding of how financing, finance was being done. And we worked on benchmarking other school districts. We worked hard, and there was never anything that, that even, it was a whiff of contention in that process. Having said all of that, because I am, I am absolutely assured that Lori is, is, is gold, and we need to keep Lori in the town. Having said all that, I am appalled that this document has reached the public. This is the kind of thing which is a personnel contention and should not have ever reached the public. A FOIA request is protected against anything. If a school teacher came to Lori or to her HR manager and said, "My superintendent is creating a hostile environment for me," and that complaint came to that person within the administration, that would not be possible to FOIA and bring forward. This document came out before a FOIA request was made, and it should never have been released. Let's please let a process work. Let's please let these parties work through anything that they may have between each other so that we can get back to some level of, you know, civility and workability with the school committee. I am not going to, you know, malign people who have not had an opportunity to provide their side of the story, and we need to see some fact binding. We need to see some, you know, we don't, as a public, need to see any of it. This should be an internal matter between the parties, and the fact that the public is, is now weighing in is just plain wrong, in my view. And I would like to see a, a process that, that plays out and everyone get back to their jobs, because I trust that the school committee is doing the best that they can, and I trust that Lori is doing the best that she can. We have a difference, but it's, it's broken into the public, and it needs to go back to the parties and have it work through and come to a resolution. It's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. And I've seen no more hands raised? No? Oh, Hugh.
Hello, thank you. My name is Hugh McCrory, 59 Lee Drive. Couple of things, I won't reiterate all of the, the supportive comments that have come through on Dr. Hunter. I think her record stands by itself. I do disagree with the last speaker. Had it not been for this public records request, a lot of parents would not be aware of what's happening. I think sunshine helps a lot, a little bit of light, daylight on these kind of issues gets people focused again. So I do respectfully, I respect what the previous caller mentioned, and I just hope that school committee can take a breath, like someone else has mentioned, and look what, just look what we have, and let's refocus and get, have a restart. That was the first point. The second point I wanted to mention on a bright note was, I wanted to compliment the, the Concord Kyle, Concord Carlisle High School on a tremendous performance last weekend of the, their musical theater. This performance was of a quality which any, any production company would be proud of. And these young men and women essentially learned how to tap dance in a number of months and put on a tremendous performance, which was very widely well-received. So congratulations to Melissa Cherish, who put in numerous hours. I volunteered a tiny little bit, and I was, I saw the amount of effort and volunteer hours that members of the community, both students and staff and volunteers, put in to make this actually work, and based on a, on a kind of a relatively small budget. So kudos to all, all involved. It's a tremendous performance, and I was very honored to, to be able to view that performance. So thank you to CCHS. And that's it. Have a good evening. Thanks for your volunteer effort.
Thank you. Aaron.
Hi, thanks so much. Erin Sahatche, 172 Ursenack Hill Road. I have three children at Thoreau. I'm one of the PTG co-presidents, and I have had the opportunity to interact with several of you through that process, including Dr. Hunter, and it's been a real amazing experience. I'm so thankful for all of your commitment, and I have to echo Hugh. I think that it's important for us as a community of parents and educators to be aware of, of different issues and concerns so that it can be addressed. And I do think that you are all representing us as, as professionals who, who lead our children and lead our community. And so I just want to express my support of Dr. Hunter and thank her and the school community, or school committee, for all of your efforts over the last few years. Having moved here during COVID, your leadership has been instrumental in making the process through remote and COVID and everything else really seamless. And we, we appreciate you and hope that you all can move forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. Seen none, then.
Can I have like the floor for a second, just to make a quick comment before we wrap up? Yeah? Yeah. I just want to say to everybody that's come out tonight on all manner of topics, thank you. Participation in what we do is so key, and frankly, I think I can speak for everyone. Sometimes we wish we had this level of engagement more. I, I just want to say that I think it's important to know that we have heard you tonight, and I can only speak for myself, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I've heard that you have really high expectations for this district, not just for Lori, but for us as a school committee. And I hope that we can demonstrate to you that in the coming months, that we're going to take this really seriously and commit to being part of a productive solution that keeps our superintendent, starts to, where a committee that is going to start to work and communicate better with each other and also to the public. So I hope and pledge that, that that will come to fruition in the coming weeks. And to all of you, continue to hold us accountable to that. Thanks.
Okay. You're good. Thank you. And with that, I'll take. A motion to adjourn. No, she was clapping. Oh, sorry. Well, I think it was, whoever it was, someone was clapping. Yeah, sorry. Yep. Okay, so a motion to adjourn, the regional.
Sumoot.
All second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we don't know who will be here next time.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Pardon?
Hugo posted.
Yeah. Yep.
We'll know tonight. We'll know tonight.
Well, we'll only know. We won't know until four o'clock on Thursday, we will be here at the next meeting. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Carl. Yes, have a good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night, Carl. Goodbye.
Thank you, Sheriff.
That was service. Do we want to power through? Okay. Do we want to power through?
Sure.
Yes, okay. All right. So next we'll move to the CMS building project update. I can start by saying, because I was at the meeting, we've moved into a really interesting process because we're starting to see the results of the work that the architectural team is doing with the building-based stakeholders. Dr. Hunter's met, she mentioned this, I think, in our last meeting. She's, they've started meeting with all, like, sort of smaller groups of stakeholders so that we can further define, or the architectural team can further define and refine very specific types of spaces. So we were lucky in our last meeting to start seeing some drawings and actual representations of what those spaces look like, which I think is really exciting. And I know Court, you've had a design subcommittee meeting since we last met that you probably want to report out on.
Well, sort of. In this sense, the last design subcommittee meeting was effectively a preview for what the full committee saw. And it's going to happen again. The, the design subcommittee is going to meet with the owner's project manager, Hill International, and with our architects, SMMA, and all of their team, and all of their firms that come in with them a week from Thursday, 7:30 a.m., our customary hour. Sorry, folks, but it's a rough hour for people. So that's May 19, Design Subcommittee, where we will see the next iteration of some of their work. I can't tell you what it's going to be, whether it's going to focus on, you know, walls or fenestration or, don't know, because the OPM is working on the draft agenda as we speak. Maybe Lori knows more than I on that, what to expect. But at any rate, May 19th for a preview, and then that work after. Our comments goes to the full committee. Lori, I don't know if we know more about their agenda, do we?
I don't know a lot more there. I know we did a sustainability subcommittee meeting yesterday, which really was a lot of question and answer from the committee of the design team, really just making sure we stay aligned with the goals of the project, EUI and, and other targets. Another update, Jared was at interviews today for the commissioning agent, so that's moving along. I don't think we can share anything publicly, but that's actively moving along. So there's a lot of pieces going forward. They actually go out for another estimate at the end of the month. So that'll be quite an interesting process, I'm sure, in this environment, to see what we get back based on the designs to date and keep a real tight handle on where they think costs are. And we go from there. So yeah, process is going along quite smoothly. We meet again, Design Subcommittee, as you said, next week, and then at the end of the month with the entire committee. So busy time.
A little bit about money, and help me out here if I get this wrong. We heard at the select board last night that the first big borrow is underway. Mr. Johnson can help us, in the neighborhood of $12 million. Oh, keep, keep going. You're, you're better at this than I am, please.
So it's a $12 million, 20-year bond. The really interesting thing is that Carrie LaFleur said last year borrowing was at .68. This year it is at 3.25. Somebody joked that we wish we had borrowed $100 million and then we could start, you know, loaning it to people at a little bit lower interest rate. That wouldn't be legal. It was interesting that our professionals recommended a 4% interest rate, which, you know, seemed very, very high at the time, but she was happy that they did that. So the cost for hassles, a 20-year bond is $124 per median household. The other interesting thing is the bond rating comes in this morning.
Did it come in?
Yes. And it's
Triple A and stable.
Yes.
Did you repeat that?
Triple A.
And stable, yes. And the one other interesting thing is that there's going to be a new rating methodology for Moody's. Is that, did I get that right?
I, I hear about that.
So that, she said that they'll be rating us again very soon.
Yeah.
So that's another interesting thing.
Jared says this is true.
Yes. So lots of things happening, and this bond rating is critical. She said that they're a little bit concerned about the decreases in our reserves, but it's all for good, good purposes. So we're just going to try to keep at that right recipe of our reserve level and our, all the money in our budget. That's it.
Anything else from the building committee?
I just have one other question. What is the value management? Is that the correct terminology, not value?
Not value engineering.
Yeah. So is it just sort of an ongoing process?
It's ongoing, and we can expect that to continue, where they look at possible savings or necessary savings. And that process probably will accelerate and get more tough, more difficult as we go along. And that's not unusual, just a little more so in volatile economic times.
And just, the, the 12 million is to get through the design process, I believe. It's 12 to 13 months, she said.
All right.
Lot, lot of progress.
Yeah. Jared?
Great.
You're back.
I'm back.
With our variance report for CPS.
So go to the 100th here. So right now, a little, little different of a picture at CPS, as I've been reporting all year, and I think the budget process sort of proved it, is we're a little bit tighter at CPS. But at this time, as of the 3rd of May, we had an unencumbered balance of just over 699,000. That is a little bit lower than what we had last year, but due to the ESR grants last year, that increased our available balance. I do expect us to have, to, to have a slight surplus, enough to probably prepay tuitions. Last year, we prepaid approximately, I think it was about $500,000. I, I hope that's the case this year. I do think as we start liquidating POs, this available balance will go up. There are some, certainly some supplies, so some things is still not necessarily supplies. There are still some expenditures that are going to happen in the next month or so. A couple of things that we are watching, the maintenance, maintenance is in the red. We're still trying to figure out what we're doing, and I'll work with Ian with that, and he'll work with Dr. Hunter after I leave on the, on the ESR II grant, if there's availability to charge some monies back into, into the general fund for that, to, to carry over a little bit of the ESR II monies. But the contingencies at the CPS budget are, are not right now where the high school is at. But again, we're tracking well. It's a little bit more of a, a bottom line budget this year, but most of our functions are in balance. But maintenance is something that I have kept in the red most of the year, just because we've been charging things in and out to ESR grants on that. It's a little unpredictable right now of maintenance. Okay. But I think we're, I think we're in good shape.
Is that it?
That's it. That's my, that's my last report, I guess.
All right. Well, that really was grief, everybody. Thank you all. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Summoot.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.